This meeting of the Starfield Board of Aldermen will now come to order. Please rise for the sake of pledging allegiance, after which we will observe a moment of silence, and, or, after which Alderman Vaughn would like to yield to Pastor Buckner to lead us in a word of prayer, and we will observe a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So Heavenly Father, we come to you tonight mindful of things that are happening all around the world, and Lord, we can't help but be thankful, thankful for the many blessings that you've given us, thankful for our country, for our state, for the city. Lord, you have blessed us, and we give you praise for that. We take nothing for granted. Lord, we ask that your hand of blessing would continue to be on the city that surrounds the area, that we would know the favor of God, that you would lead us, Lord. We pray for our city leaders this evening, Lord, that you would bless them with wisdom and peace and good communication, and that this evening would be to your praise, and Lord, that Jesus, you would be blessed. Lord, we thank the folks in our community, some that are hurting, and we ask that you would comfort them, for those that are weak, that you would strengthen them, and for those that are rejoicing, that you would remind us, Lord, we give you praise for glory and thanksgiving. Lord, bless this evening, bless this time. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
All right, you have before you a copy of the written agenda, and there are two items that did not come in in time for the publication of the agenda on Friday, that if possible need to be acted upon tonight. The city clerk, for convenience, has placed those two items as potentially items F and G under Board Business and Pallets, and that is the consideration of a resolution declaring an emergency situation concerning the interceptor sewer line failure on Banyan Road, and the discussion and consideration of the request of PP 16-15 preliminary flat. It came through P and Z and was left off of the agenda in error. So my recommendation is the agenda be revised to add those two items.
Same move.
All right, Alderman Carver has proposed revising the agenda to add items F and G that I just stated for you. Alderman Carver, is that your proposed revision?
Yes, sir.
Do I hear any objections? Any objections? Any objection? An objection saying none, Alderman Carver, do you have further proposed revisions?
No, sir, I do not.
Are there any further proposed revisions from the members of the board? Any further proposed revisions? Any further proposed revisions, seeing none, a motion to approve the agenda as revised is in order?
So move.
A motion has been made by Alderman Carver to approve the agenda as revised. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion's been seconded by Alderman Vaughn. Alderman Carver, do you wish to speak on the merits?
Yes, sir.
Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussions seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion clearly passes. The first matter you have before you is a consideration of the minutes from the August 16th meeting.
No approval.
Motion has been made by Alderman Little to approve of the August 16, 2016, minutes of the mayor and Board of Aldermen of the City of Starfield, Mississippi incorporating any and all changes recommended by the city attorney, otherwise as presented. Alderman Little, is that your motion?
It is.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion's been seconded by Alderman. When, Alderman Little, do you wish to speak on the merits?
Yes, sir.
Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussions seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion clearly passes. We'll now move to announcements and comments. I have no announcements and comments this evening. Are there any announcements and comments by the members of the board? Any announcements or comments by the members of the board? Any announcements or comments? Seeing none, we'll move to citizen comments. At this time, any citizen wishing to make comments may do so by coming forward, introducing yourself, and you'll be recognized to speak for a maximum of three minutes.
To the mayor and board, my name is Alvin Turner Ward, seven. To the mayor, to the board, to the vice mayor, to Alderman Vaughn.
Thank you, Alvin.
Alderman Walker.
Thank you, Alvin.
To the NAC President Taylor, and to the legal redress chair, which is myself. Citizens, we have gotten to the point to where that we just have to take some action. We would like that the harassment on the job, the harassment on the phone, the disorder conduct of the way that person act, that we get together on that, because we're getting into the changing of the year, and we don't want people afraid of one another. That we, we would like for the police, the fire, sanitation, park, and the personnel director, letting, we love y'all, and y'all keep your chin up and do the best you can. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Do we have any further citizen comments? Any further citizen comments? Any further citizen comments?
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. I would just like to know again that all of y'all are my Aldermen. I'm not going to call no special name, because everybody is my Alderman, and everything that goes well in the city is up to y'all. So I would just like to come tonight to say, we had a water problem over in Roland Hills with the subdivision where I do live at, and, you know, it was explained to me exactly what I need to do this morning after I talked to my Alderman, you know, Mr. Perkins. But I would like to say, if we could, if the water department could get together and put together a thing, because we didn't know if you could bathe in the water, some of it was still brown, we didn't know what you could do, you know, and he did explain it to me, and I did call a couple of people, because our association is not working right in Roland Hills, but we're going to get it right. But if you could put some sometime in the monthly statements that we receive, in case something happened in an emergency like that, because we're under water bar until the end of the week, you know, and that's pretty hard, that's pretty hard, you know, to try to get used to, because my dad drinks out of the fountains. You know, he don't drink water out of bottle, he liked the fountain water, you know, and I'd just like to know sometime if they could put it in the, you know, in the news about different things like that. But they did come on the news and say something about it, that we were under water bar notice, and we still trying to figure out, you know, some of the kinks from it. And then another thing that I have, I came up here and I said, yes, I was for the, you know, for Walmart to come in and get what they could get, you know, the four-way stop or whatever, what they needed for fun. I went back and I researched that. I worked at Walmart for 25 years. Walmart got enough money to do what they can do in the community, and that is to give jobs to people, they don't give you no 40 hours. You know, I never got 40 hours when I worked 25 years down there, and I never got 40 hours. They can pay their easement if they want to come in and get everything done, and we enjoy business. Yes, I know we need the business. We do, we need the business, but they can pay their own leasing. They could do that, because we can take that and use that for roads and the hills and different things, ditches that need cleaning out in some of these places. Some of these places still got dicks, dicks that, you know, the ditches are real infected. They're infected, and we need to get, the mosquitoes, they keep talking about the mosquitoes, we need to talk to them. I know my time about us, but I would just like to say, please, consider Walmart coming in, if they're going to bring a job, bring 40-hour job, we'll be okay. But if not, don't come in and take our city money that we could use elsewhere. Thank you all for listening to us. I'm too far, don't take anything.
You made it, Ms. Ison. You had two seconds.
Uh-oh. I got two seconds.
Do we have any further citizen comments? Any further citizen comments? Any further citizen comments? Seeing none, we have one public hearing scheduled tonight, and this matter will not be before you for action tonight. It is the proposed tax increment financing plan for the Starfield Neighborhood Market. We will have the public hearing tonight, and the matter will be before you for consideration at the October 4th meeting. It's for the Walmart Neighborhood Market, which would be located off of Highway 12 Extended. The TIF agreement would fund the construction of the public roadway that would be necessary for the project. It would require the city to pledge 50% of all sales taxes that the property collects that are not being collected now, which it is not collecting sales tax now, so it would be all sales taxes collected on the property, and 100% of the ad valorem tax growth on the property. It is currently on the tax rolls for something, although it is undeveloped land, so it will be valued considerably higher once the development is in place. We would be pledging 100% of all of that property tax growth under the TIF agreement. Ms. Sugg, who is the consultant for the developer, is here. Ms. Sugg, prior to hearing public comments, do you have any comments you'd like to make?
Yes, sir. Thank you, board members, and thank you, Mayor. We appreciate your consideration of this project, we're very excited about it. In response to a question raised a few moments ago, Walmart anticipates bringing 95 jobs, full-time and part-time, to the community with an estimated annual payroll around $2 million. These are real jobs, and they will have real impacts in the community, and we're very excited about that. The cost of this project is going to be in excess of $14 million, and Walmart is asking for assistance in laying down a road that will be dedicated to the city, and with some signalization work that will help with traffic coming off of Highway 12 into this acreage, which will later be developed by the landowner. We appreciate y'all's consideration, and we ask that on October 4th, y'all vote in favor of the project.
Are there any questions or comments from the members of the board for Ms. Sugg? Any questions or comments from the members of the board? Any questions or comments? Seeing none, thank you, Ms. Sugg.
Thank you.
At this time, we'll now hear public comments on the proposed tax increment financing plan and agreement. Anyone who wishes to speak may do so by coming forward, introducing yourself, and you'll be recognized to speak for a maximum of three minutes.
Do I have to come back and do this?
You can, and you get a fresh three minutes, Ms. Ison.
Like I said, when I was up here just before then, I would like to say, we enjoy jobs coming here in Starfield, we do. Now, don't get me, I'm for any kind of job that comes here in Starfield, but I have worked for Walmart, like I said, 25 years. I worked for them, dealers, and your raise depends on whether you're a woman or whether you're a man. We know that all the time, we've been trying to fight that, but you can't fight a big co-op, you know, cooperation like Walmart. But I would just like to say, I would just like to say to each and every one of you, Walmart got enough money to come into the city, they can come in two times. Walmart got enough money to do what they need to do for their easements and pay us here in the city. Let it be known that they do have enough to come in, and we can't fight for what we want, but the workers there, they're underpaid, they're underpaid, and by the city using that money to do that, then, like I say, again, we could be building our ditches, we could be doing infrastructure, we could be doing anything that we got to do. I'm not for, I'm not against them coming in, and I don't get it bad, because they were my employees for 25 years, and I do appreciate that, but I would just like to say, please, please, consider, let them pay. Look how many stores have went out of business in the last few months for Walmart. Just look, I did the research, and I just want you to know, just look at it, and I'm begging you, please, let them pay their own, if they come in, you enjoy them still, and get the job for more than probably 40 hours, because I worked as a department manager, and I didn't get 40 hours. I got money, but I didn't get 40 hours, and didn't get the money that I should have obtained while I was working there, but I enjoyed it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ison.
All right, good evening. My name is Alvin, and I don't know exactly what this is, but a picture to show me what this is helps a lot, because people feel like that, they look for me to be in the know. They ask me what's going on, if I don't know, I can't tell, but I don't know what this is, a picture of it would give me something to try to help people when they ask about We need to try and keep what we have. We don't want to run people off and wind up being a ghost town. Let us try to do the best we can while we can, and try to work together as people. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Any further public comments on the proposed tax increment financing plan and agreement? Any further public comments? Any further public comments? Any further public comments? Seeing none, are there any concluding comments by the members of the board?
Mr. Mayor, may we be recognized, please?
You may.
Mr. Mayor, let me just say very briefly, with regard to this particular matter, I want the public to know that I'm pro-business, pro-growth, pro-economic development, but at the same time, I have a very different philosophy as to how we get to the bottom line. Certainly appreciate all of the businesses that are here. I want to thank Walmart for its presence in all of the businesses that are located within our city. I recall several meetings ago, we had an entrepreneur who was here, and there was the matter of tax increment financing that was before the board for consideration, and this is a businessman who has been in our community for years, and he made a comment to the board that, you know, that when he started his business, that, you know, he had to start on his own, and, you know, and this method was not there when he got started. At the same time, he opposed, in his words, a subsidy to a business, and, of course, and I share that philosophy, and I just have a different result about businesses coming in. I'm very business-oriented, I'm a businessperson myself, I'm inclined to support a very healthy business economy, but not with this type of an arrangement. Of course, Mr. Turner, I noticed that the agenda has the Starfield Neighborhood Market project, but I think you and I understand that this is Walmart LLC, and so, and the problem that I have with this, and of course, you know, but I don't mind accepting viewpoints, because the majority always controls, and I've learned that over my number of years, but with this proposal, you know, Walmart, this corporate giant is asking this board for this tax increment financing plan that allows at least 100% of the sales tax, not sales tax, for the property taxes to be diverted to this project, and 50% of the sales taxes, and that is a very healthy amount, and I understand there are different philosophies on it, but I want to make sure it's clear that I'm not against businesses, but I'm against this arrangement. You know, I have over half a million dollars of needs in my ward, I have needs for streets to be overlaid, I have a lot of capital improvement needs, I have a lot of drainage needs, a lot of infrastructure needs, and of course, there are arguments to everything, you know, as a lawyer, I understand that, and, you know, and Walmart, you know, this corporate giant, you know, well, you got the pros and the cons, but I just have a very conservative philosophy, and that's just the nature of it, you know, I mean, I just differ from others, but at the same time, there's those who argue on the other side, but I just wanted to say that so we'll be real clear, and, you know, and the vice mayor, I think is the best one to articulate, you know, his position on where he stands as to a business, again, on pro-business, pro-growth, pro-economic development. I welcome all businesses in this community and to this community, but I think they need to come in with their own finances. If they want an access road, then they need to pay for the access road. If they want to have signalization, then they need to pay for signalization. So if you do it that way, then all of the businesses will be treated similarly, then there'll be nothing treated differently, because what's happening here, the trend is, you know, I've seen it here now, you got, I'm not going to call any single business out by name, you've had business A come in and get tax increment financing, then business B has come in, then business C has come in, business D has come in, and so, you know, I expect further, but, of course, that's the will of this board, and I intelligently respect that, but I just wanted to, Mr. Mayor, I think I just need to say that as to address the measure of this matter, and I just wanted to say that for the record, but, you know, but the vice mayor, I mean, whatever the will of this board, we're going to do that. So, Mr. Mayor, I wanted to say that tonight, because I just needed to address that, and I think that's going to be about maybe one other time, I'm going to need to seek recognition tonight to address one other matter that's going to be coming up pretty shortly under the mayor's business, and I think I need to say something for consistency purposes. But at this time, Mr. Mayor, thank you so much for the recognition, and I'm going to yield the floor. Thank you.
Any further concluding comments, Alderman Carver?
My comments relate to this project more from the standpoint of, once you, you know, Walmart being the number one name brand recognition store in America and the world for that matter, this is going to be something that's kind of anchors and promotes growth on that side of town. The more I thought about it, the number of individuals that we can alleviate also up and down Highway 12, we have some of the highest accident rates in the state on Highway 12 and Highway 182, and this will allow individuals that, from the university, they're either traveling back toward the Webster County area, or maybe back to Columbus, we've got a lot of commuters and a lot of travelers, not just from the professional side, but also students, but this will allow those individuals to stop and get some groceries or their medicine or whatever they need on the way home, and not have to go up and down Highway 12. So again, sometimes with these types of projects, you have to do these type of financing options, but this is going to be one that's going to really be, really, really have a lot of potential for that side of town. We see a car dealership coming, we've also had a couple hotels come in, we have more things coming, and when you get a Walmart-type development on that side of town, I just see a ripple effect, I see a domino effect starting. This is another testament to this board and the previous board, and I know we've heard the figures of the hundreds of millions of dollars worth of development that we've had going, and we will have to go, but this is a good project. Sometimes with these large, large-scale projects like this, this is what it takes to make it, and this is what we had to do, and I hope this will pass, so, thank you.
Any further concluding comments by the members of the board? Any further concluding comments? Are there any further concluding comments? Seeing none, that will conclude this public hearing on the tax increment financing plan. The next matter before you is a discussion and consideration of a 2016-2017 service agreement with Cornerstone Government Affairs LLC, as reviewed by the Board of Aldermen. Ms. Clements, if you could go ahead and pull the PowerPoint presentation up. I'm going to recognize the representative of Cornerstone in just a second, but I want to make some introductory comments prior to making that recognition. So our contract with Cornerstone ends at the end of this month. They have been under contract with us, just leave it on the table. They've been under contract with us since March of this year. They came on late, that is nobody's fault but my fault, as I didn't bring this matter to you until late February, and represented us, as well as any city, was represented in the Capitol. I can tell you that, because I saw it with my own two eyes for the legislative session. And of course, we were seeking, we put forward two projects, but we were really seeking the highest priority and appropriation for the police renovation project, and we didn't get that. One thing I need to make very, very clear, as we are considering this contract, is the best that Cornerstone or any government affairs consultant can ever offer is that they will offer us the best representation possible. There is never a promise of an appropriation or of a grant or of a strategic partnership that we may have them representing us to either a government entity or a private entity. The best we can ask for is their expertise to give us the best chance possible, and I can tell you beyond the shadow of doubt in the legislative session, last year, they gave us the best chance possible, much better than we would have been without their assistance. Since that time, they have continued to represent us on a number of matters. They have represented us to state and federal agencies in relation to two grants that the Fire Department is currently pursuing. One of those is still pending. They have represented us with a private entity, Kansas City Southern, in trying to get some movement on Kansas City Southern, allowing us to use some of its right-of-way for potentially a rail with trails program. They have made quite a bit of progress on the old landfill site, which is the next phase of expansion at the Thad Cochran Research Park. There's approximately $2 million of environmental cleanup that has to occur before that site is ready for the next phase of development. They have identified a potential funding source with the Department of Environmental Quality that we weren't aware of before, so that is a project that hopefully they will continue to work for us, and we're already better off than we were before, and that we actually have a grant source of funding that's been identified that we wouldn't have known about otherwise. They have been working with Senator Cochran's office to ensure when the new reserve building is finished, the old reserve property, which is a prime piece of commercial real estate, will be conveyed to the city, and they'll tell you a little bit more about where they are on those efforts when they come to make their presentation. And I think perhaps I haven't noted as much as I should have, the influence they've had in the Atmos Gas negotiations related to our new industrial park. As you'll recall, we took a leap of faith when we decided to move forward with the new industrial park, as it currently doesn't have gas service, and getting gas service to that property is quite complicated. Well, since that time, we've moved from not knowing whether or when there might be gas service in the future on that property, to being actively involved with both Atmos Gas and the Public Service Commission, and having a window of 12 to 18 months mapped out where we think we could potentially be in control of our own destiny and have gas service on that property. It was Cornerstone Governmental Affairs that jump-started that process. As you'll recall, when the link representatives came to us, they told us that the ball was going to be in our court on that issue going forward. Well, I will be honest with you, that's an example of an issue where I wouldn't even know where to begin, so this is an example of where it's very, very helpful to have them on retainer. I turned to the Cornerstone team, and I said, "How do you even begin?" Negotiating with the Public Service Commission and a private gas company on bringing service to an area that doesn't have it, and within a month, they had Atmos and our Public Service Commissioner in a room, along with link officials, and that process has moved forward rapidly since then. My hope is that they're going to have the time that they didn't have last year to lay the groundwork for our legislative requests this year, and in the coming months, we will build our legislative agenda and put ourselves in the best position possible to hopefully receive funding from the Mississippi Legislature this year. I can tell you, we will certainly be in a much better position with Cornerstone's assistance building that agenda and laying the groundwork with our legislative delegation and the leadership in Jackson than if we try to go it alone. So... Uh, so, um, this contract would take us through the end of this term. It would take us through, uh, the end of the month of June. It's a $30,000 contract, uh, that would be paid, uh, monthly, uh, in installments of $3,000, $333. That, that would all come from my budget. You do not have to move, uh, funding, uh, anywhere. Uh, and, um, it is my recommendation, uh, that you approve the contract renewal. With that, I'm going to recognize the representatives from Cornerstone, uh, to make a presentation.
Good evening, Mayor Wiseman and members of the board. Thank you for allowing us to come this evening. Uh, my colleague Elliot is going to pass out a copy of the presentation, just in case something goes wrong, and we have some technical difficulties, we want you to have a copy of the presentation. While he's doing that, I want to tell you that I am a little bit nervous being here this evening, and with all due respect to you, it's because two of my professors are in the audience. So I want to make sure that I don't embarrass Dr. Wall and Mrs. McDavid and, uh, any of their students who are here. So, again, thank you for allowing us to come this evening. We are going to, um, we are going to go through just a brief presentation. Mayor Wiseman gave a, gave a very good, um, summary of some of the things that we've done, and stole a little bit of our thunder, but thank you for that. That was great. I want to talk to you just a little bit, give you an idea of what we're going to talk about, and want to tell you just a little bit more of our team. You've met my colleague Elliot and myself before, and I'm going to tell you about the rest of our team, a little bit about what we are capable of doing. And then, uh, we're going to talk about state and federal priorities, and then some of the current projects. That's our Cornerstone team. We are based in Washington DC, and we have nine offices across the country. Our Jackson team, you see the people there, um, in addition to Elliot and myself who were here last time, Chris Champion is with us, and also Joe Sims is in our Jackson, Mississippi office. John Keast, Hunt Shipman, and Susan Swett are all Mississippians. They worked on the Hill. John Keast was Congressman Wicker, and then Senator Wicker's Chief of Staff. Hunt Shipman worked with, um, Senator Cochran, and also Susan Swett was Congressman, and then Senator Wicker's Legislative Director. A unique fact about our DC team, Susan Swett's parents live here in Starkville, so, um, her parents are, are taxpayers as well. We also have Becky Philman, who's our Administrative Professional in Jackson, and our Managing Partner for State Government Affairs, Kent Coffin, and our President Jeff Gennello. Our team is very, very diverse. We have quite, uh, a lift of service, working with government relations in Mississippi. We have more than 38 years, closer to 40 years now, as, um, it's gotten a little bit later in the year, of working with our Mississippi Congressional Delegation. We work with, um, political campaigns and engagement. We provide solid political advice to all of our clients on a wide, wide variety of things. Our capabilities, this is not an all-inclusive list, but it will tell you just a little bit about what we are capable of doing, and what we enjoy doing in partnerships with our clients. We'd like people to understand that we are not hired guns. We are trusted advisors and partners with our clients. We are always available, uh, thankfully now, through cell phones and iPads. We are available quite frequently, 24 hours a day. We do, in addition to the work we do at the Capitol, you heard Mayor Wiseman talk about the things that we've been able to do with the Public Service Commission and with some other business entities. Not only do we assist clients, and one of the things we've been grateful to do with Starkville is to work on the budgets process, the state appropriations and bonds process. Um, we like to provide strategic counsel. That's some, some of the things that he detailed about what we've been able to do for the city, and we're hopeful to continue doing for the city, not just with the legislature, but with all of the activities that you have going on. Also, I'm going to pass this on to Chris and Elliot, and they will go through the rest of the, of the presentation, and will be available for questions as well.
Thanks, Camille. It's an honor, uh, to be here tonight. I thought what we do is talk about our game plan going forward, um, if we were privileged enough, uh, to move forward and, and continue our work for the city of Starkville. So as a former staffer for Senator Roger Wicker and Policy Director for Governor Bryant, um, I always appreciated when someone came to me, uh, before the session or before legislative work began, and not during the middle of the session, where we could plan for priorities moving forward. So what some of our, uh, work would be before the session begins is to set both the state and federal priorities for the city. Uh, and that, that includes us, uh, coming, uh, back up here and meeting, uh, with the mayor, uh, and, and Alderman individually, or as a group, um, to discuss what those priorities may be for the upcoming session. We have a good idea of what those are, uh, but we want to visit with you and make sure that, uh, we're, we're a team going forward, and Elliot will cover what we believe is some of those priorities in just a minute. Um, we also, um, want to, uh, work on facilitating meetings before the session begins, um, with the proper leadership, uh, at the Capitol. Of course, you all know and have personal relationships, um, with your, uh, members of the legislative, uh, delegation that, that represent the city in October Hall County, uh, Representatives Ellis, Robertson, and Chisholm, as well as, um, Senator Jackson and Turner. Uh, we feel that it's integral to meet with those people ahead of time, and continue to communicate with them throughout the legislative session about what their priorities are. Those are the people that are going to help us push initiatives for the city of Starkville, and we've got to have them on our team as we move forward. We'll also want to set up, uh, meetings with, um, the, the proper leadership at the Capitol, whether it be with Lieutenant Governor Reeves and, and Speaker Gunn, then personally are their staff. Um, the, the House has a new Appropriations Chairman this year, uh, that will be the remaining, uh, three years of the term, Representative John Reed, as well as meeting, uh, with the other key leaders, Senator Buck Clark, um, who's the Chair of the Appropriations Committee, and Representative Jeff Smith, and Senator Joey Phillingame, who are, are, um, Chairman of the Finance Committees. Uh, we met with those guys last year. They're all familiar with the city of Starkville, uh, and the priorities, um, we will have going forward, but we want to re-educate them on the initiatives, um, that's, that we'll bring forward for them next year. In addition to our work at the state level, um, we feel it's integral to continue to update, um, the members of the Congressional Delegation, Senator Cochran, Senator Wicker, um, and, and Congressman Harper, as well as their staffs, um, whether it's, uh, when you guys, uh, make, make visits to DC, meeting with them and their staff, uh, in Washington, or when they are in the district, they're in town, um, there, there's a lot of work periods, uh, in the state for them between now and the end of the year. Obviously, elections are coming forward, and so they're back in the state. Uh, Congressman Harper is campaigning, Senator Cochran and Senator Wicker are not, but they will be back in the state over the next coming months, and getting them to Starkville. And it's, it's always good for them to see the projects, um, themselves in person, as opposed to a sheet of paper, um, and they can get the real touch and feel of, of what's needed, um, here in town. So we'd like to get them, um, if possible, while they're, while they're in the state here, uh, in Starkville to visit. Uh, and I'll let, um, Elliot go through some of the projects.
Good evening, Mayor and Board. Again, I'm Elliot Flags, and this slide covers, or the next few slides will cover the current projects that we're working on, and one potential project in the near future. Uh, first, this is a huge priority, I know, for the city. This is the Thad Cochran Research Park, the environmental remediation. Uh, we're looking at a few different avenues for funding. First is, uh, working with the Appropriations Chairman and Ways and, Ways and Means and Finance Chairman, uh, to try to get in either MDEQ's appropriation deal and/or the, uh, Omnibus Bond Bill, next legislative session. The second is what the mayor talked about earlier. This is an option, the Mississippi Unhazardous Solid, Solid Ways Corrective Action Trust Fund. Uh, I'm working with some people there. I was told that possibly within a month, we need to re-contact MDEQ, and they'll probably be making decisions sometime towards the end of this year. Uh, and lastly, uh, the cleanup grant under the Environmental Protection Agency. This is at the federal level, uh, the applications are going to be available starting next month. Next is the Rails with Trails. Uh, we approached Kansas City Southern with the Rails Two Trails, uh, a few years ago, and again, when we were hired, uh, they are not willing to abandon the property for Rails Two Trails, but we've been told through, uh, some of the Alderman and Mayor is that we approached them with the Rails with Trails Initiative, uh, potentially partnering with the Robert Wood Johnson Foundation, Blue Cross Blue Shield, or, uh, Action for Healthy Kids, uh, whether it's one partnerships or multiple partnerships, uh, the visibility, uh, the brand name, and potential funding are all options, uh, hopefully through one or all of those entities. But we also want to benchmark other cities and what they've done with this similar program, and resubmit a proposal to Mr. McIntosh with Kansas City Southern. Again, the mayor touched on this, the old Army Reserve property. Uh, our office was in contact with Tom Avery, with Senator Cochran's office. Uh, he is one of Senator Cochran's legislative assistants. What he told us, the last conversation he had with the Army Reserve and some of the people on the committee, is that they're on a 12 to 18-month, uh, time span on, uh, from beginning the project to the grand opening. At the time of the grand opening, that's when they will be able to put the language in the bill through the Armed Services Committee on the Senate side to pass through to convey to the city of Starkville. So that, that, that is a long-term project.
Elliot, that's the property over on Highway 12, is that correct?
Yes. Uh, we have the FEMA grants. One is still pending, I believe, that's the SAFER grant. Uh, what our office was able to do is get letters of support from, uh, Congressman Harper, Senator Thad Cochran, and also Mike Chaney, our State Insurance Commissioner. And lastly, this is a, uh, project, I know the next go-round will be next April, when applications will be due. But we believe that this is, um, I'm sure all of you are familiar with the Tiger Grant. I believe the city has received some funding before for previous projects. But I know there are several different projects that probably would apply to the Tiger Grant, so hopefully that's an option. And I put this example at the end, um, GreeningTheGateways.com, the city of Jackson, last year or the year before, received an ample amount of funding, and it's a good, uh, website to look at to kind of benchmark what the city of Jackson did. I mean, their entire process is labeled on this website, and a few, as of a few days ago, the website is still up and running. So at this time, that concludes our presentation. I know some of you may have some questions, and we are hopefully prepared to answer them. I'm sure that we are.
Questions or comments for the Cornerstone team? Alderman Carter?
Initially, I was against y'all's, um, first round of funding, but mainly because we didn't know y'all. There was a couple of initial visits, and I really was outspoken against, because we didn't know you. Um, I think you've done a, a good job in, in the meantime of really reaching out to us as a board and get to know us on a, uh, on a friendship-type level, and then also as a professional level, and just reaching out and, and telling us what you do. You also send, uh, uh, updates to us, kind of letting us know what, you know, on the legislative side, what's going on, and what's, uh, up and coming, and what we can look forward to. Um, I will probably, I will support y'all this time, and mainly, uh, it was going to be more from any kind of friendship, and, and we've made, we're our friends, and y'all do a really good job, and I've researched your company and your corporation, and what y'all do. But it will be a one-year on my, on my personal vote, if I'm here for the second time, will be just basically a return on investment to see. I don't think y'all had a fair shot this time on the session. You came in halfway, and I don't, I mean, from what we've learned, as far as our funding sources, it didn't, didn't happen. But, you know, it will be a return on investment. I think, uh, 30,000 is probably a salary of one person, but I think this is the time we're talking about growth with a previous project, is this is the, I probably wouldn't have supported it five or 10 years ago regardless, but now, I think this is the, the one year and the one chance that you could see a pretty tremendous return on investment. So I will be supporting y'all with this, and I want to say just, again, thank y'all for reaching out to us, and thank you for the updates that you send, and just keeping us updated on what's going on, and these type presentations. So, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Carter. Um, one of the things that we take a lot of pride in is making sure that we are transparent, making sure that everything that we're doing, you know about it. We send out during the legislative session, every Friday afternoon, a summary of what has happened during that week, and what to expect the next week during the legislative session. Post-legislative session, we try to keep you up to date with what we are doing for you, and the work that we're doing on your behalf, so that you know what we're doing, whether it's in Jackson, working in DC, or with companies, or with other state agencies, what we're doing for you, and how it affects the city of Starkville. So, thank you very much, and we will definitely continue those, those activities.
Alderman Little, then Alderman Webb.
That was an impressive list that you've got, and the pipeline that you're working on right now. And I think, uh, as Alderman Carter alluded to a moment ago, we brought you guys in kind of behind the eight-ball last spring, kind of laid in the legislative process, trying to help the PD on the renovations, and same time, the school system's seeking $10 million, and that would have been probably an overreaching ask, but we went forward in hopes, and it didn't pan out. But, uh, I've had, heard nothing but good things about your group, and I think, um, I understand there's several cities around the state that have lobbyists. With you guys, we have a team of lobbyists, not just at the state level, but at the, also the local, I mean, the, uh, DC level, federal level. Um, I think you bring a lot to the table, and you can help, give us an edge in, in this day and time, maneuvering through the legislative process and appropriations. I think that's something that can be beneficial to us, and, uh, we handicap us not having that going forward. And, uh, with that, I'm going to be supporting you guys tomorrow. Thank you.
Alderman Webb.
Thank you so much. Good evening again, Ms. Elliot, uh, Mr. Elliot, Mrs. Young. Thank you so much. Before, when you all were here, we had no information. We had nothing. So we had to learn through this process, and I'm glad that I've been open-minded and learned through this process. I thank you so much for all of the work that you've been able to do on our city's behalf. Tonight, I will be supporting this, because I hear that you all may be on to something, and we want it here for the city of Starkville. Thank you so much for lobbying on behalf of the Army Reserve. I'm passionate about the military personnel, as I have always been, but now I have a son who's Second Lieutenant Wynn, who serves our state. Um, the Tiger Grants are in there. Very good stuff is in there. Thank you all so much again. Thank you all for providing us this information, and I hope that this passes tonight, and I look forward to working with you all. Now, I need to share something with you all. I think a couple of the board members know, because I couldn't keep it, and I told them. This year, I've been selected to serve on the Mississippi Municipal League Legislative Committee for 2017. I will have my first meeting next month in Natchez. I am so excited that I don't know what to do. So you all will be seeing me, because I'll be on that committee. Having said that, again, I support you this evening, looking forward to working with you if this should pass. And now I'm going to tell something on you, Ms. Young. Mayor, members of the board, she's actually going to be a taxpayer here in our city, because I understand that you purchased a condo here. So will you tell the mayor and the members of the board that you are a property owner here now?
I am one of your constituents. She is exactly right. And next fall, when my daughter comes here, I hope that Chief Nichols won't get to know her intimately, but I will probably leave a whole lot more money in the city when she gets in school here.
The only thing that I hate you to purchase a house in Wartu, but it's open any time. Mayor, members of the board, I yield the floor at this time.
Mr. Mayor, I recognize.
You may.
Mr. Mayor, first of all, uh, I think it's correct to say that this matter is budgeted, correct?
It is.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Flags, um, I want to appreciate you and your group for the presentation. Just want to say some prelude, um, of course, your dad, I've been knowing him for a long time. When he was, um, a member of the, um, House Representative, when I was one of eight staff attorneys there, and certainly did a very, uh, fine job there, and one of his committees saying was fees and salaries. So we appreciate his, um, his leadership, what he's done for the state of Mississippi. When you came last time, um, you certainly were not in the best position as compared to this time, because last time, as I understand the legislative process, having worked with, you know, for the House Representatives, um, you were in the middle of the session, the deadlines had passed, whereby now, um, you in a very unique position to best represent the city of Starkville client, in that you get to talk with all these stakeholders that you mentioned, and they can pre-file the bills, and, um, and get to meet with them ahead of time, and that's when a lot, most of your bills will file, and then before that, uh, general bill deadline come up, that's one of your first deadline, and some of the other deadlines come up next. So, um, because I understand your initial contract came in February of 2016 and expires at the end of this month.
Yes, it's at 30th of February.
Right, and so therefore, you're at least three, um, three months before this term starts, and we can get a lot of bills, what it, well, we can get whatever bills, um, that needs to be pre-filled, and meeting with these people. So we, we get an opportunity to get the, the best, um, benefit for the resources that we're expending in this process, and, and so certainly, I, um, you know, I observed you as you presented this to the board this time, the last time, your, um, your, um, presentations, and everything looked very thorough, and, and I'm convinced that, um, this is a very viable and reasonable opportunity. The reason I'm taking this time here, I, I think I owe it to the taxpayers to know, because last time, you know, given the things that they just said, I didn't think, you know, that the totality of the fact of the circumstances, uh, supported me in voting for it. But I think, uh, given all of the projects that are coming forth, and, um, and this contract will take us through the, through the end of this term, and, um, and prior to the end of the term, we can kind of assess where we are, and, and hopefully, you know, we'll get some very positive results, and you have some very, um, um, good and great people working for you, uh, and for you and the team. and you have some very good and great people working for you, and you're in the team with great credentials, all the way up to the, to the Washington DC office, and, and we hoping that all these projects will materialize, even with this, with the matter of the Army Reserve property. So, of course, you know, I may be unavailable when you get here, but I know you're still working for the city of Starkville, and we're looking great things, and certainly, if I, if I feel I need you, I'll call your dad, is that, is that good enough? But, but Mr. Mayor, with that being said, I'm gonna yield the floor, but I'm gonna support your project this time.
Thank you, Alderman.
Mayor.
Alderman Maynard. Motion has been made by Alderman Maynard to approve of an agreement with Cornerstone Governmental Affairs LLC, as reviewed by the Board Attorney and as presented. Alderman Maynard, is that your motion?
Yes, sir.
Do we hear a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Alderman Wynn. Alderman Maynard, do you wish to speak on the merits?
Yes, sir.
Any discussion, any discussion, any discussion, saying not all those in favor, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion clearly passes. Thank you.
Thank you very much, we appreciate it.
Mayor, may I say one thing?
You may.
Mr. Flags?
Yes, ma'am.
Tell Mayor Flags that anytime he gets ready to invite me to Walnut Hills, I'm ready. He stopped off to see me back in October when he was here, he and C.O. barking, so tell him that I said hello.
I will.
Thank you.
The next matter before you is a discussion in consideration of appointing Mr. Maynard. Motion has been made by Alderman Maynard to appoint W. Corey Gallo to the Ockebah County Heritage Museum Board of Trustees for a full term, following the expiration of his, of the vacated term of Mr. Richard Corey, which will expire on September 30th, 2016, as presented. Alderman Maynard, is that your motion?
Yes, sir.
Do we hear a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Alderman Walker. Alderman Maynard, do you wish to speak on the merits?
Yes, sir.
Any discussion, any discussion, any discussion, saying not all those in favor, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion clearly passes. Next matter you have before you is a discussion in consideration of FP-1613, final plat for subdivision at the northwest corner of Lynn Lane in South Montgomery. And Mr. Havlin, Mr. Corbin, will introduce.
Mr. Havlin, may proceed.
FP-16-13 is a request by Griddle Run LLC for final plat approval for subdivision one parcel into two, located on northwest corner of Lynn Lane in South Montgomery in an R3 zone. The proposed parcel would actually be located on Lynn Lane. The property was rezoned to an R3 by the Board of Alderman's last seven, 2015. The developer is currently building duplex-style homes to sell on the property. The property is also currently going through a condominium plating process with the city. Proposed parcel is two acres, no easements or dedications are shown on this, those will be added in for the condominium plating. All utility connections are currently available. At the time of rezoning, there were six conditions that were added to this that would still be in effect. The Plains and Zoners Commission added one condition, having to deal with sureties and sidewalks, that condition was met on 9/15/16. Available for inquiries.
Questions or comments for Mr. Havlin? Any questions or comments for Mr. Havlin? Any questions or comments?
So move.
Motion has been made by Alderman Walker to approve of FP-1613, final plat approval for subdividing one parcel into two, located on the northwest corner of Lynn Lane in South Montgomery, parcel number 102I-00-003.00, as presented. Alderman Walker, is that your motion?
Yes.
Do we hear a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Alderman Little. Alderman Walker, do you wish to speak on the merits?
No.
Any discussion, any discussion, any discussion, saying not all those in favor, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion clearly passes. The next matter on the agenda is a discussion in consideration of applications received and the interview process for the position of the Director of Human Resources. The applications, per your order, were accepted and screened by the city clerk, and you have in your packet the four applicants that most met the qualification criteria. Discussion.
May I move approval?
Motion has been made by Alderman Maynard to, do we have a date time in the order?
Yes, Mayor. Move approval to set interviews for the position of Human Resource Director to be held at the regular meeting of the Mayor and Board of Alderman on Tuesday, October 4th, 2016, with the following applicants to be interviewed: Navarre Ashford, Stephen Blaylock, Stephanie Halbert, and Amanda Jenkins. Those interviews beginning at, beginning of the board meeting first at 5:30. We can just take them in alphabetical order, that'd be the easiest.
Motion has been made by Alderman Maynard to set interviews for the position of Human Resources Director to be held at the regular meeting of the Mayor and Board of Alderman Tuesday, October 4th, 2016, with the following applicants to be interviewed in alphabetical order: Navarre Ashford, Stephen Blaylock, Stephanie Halbert, and Amanda Jenkins. Interviews will commence at the beginning of the meeting at 5:30 on October 4th. Alderman Maynard, is that your motion?
Yes, sir.
Do we hear a second?
Mayor, I would like to-
Do we hear a second?
Second.
As the motion has been seconded by Alderman Wynn. Alderman Maynard, do you wish to speak on the merits?
Yes, sir.
All right, Alderman Webb.
Yes, Alderman Maynard, if you will, let's amend that to five o'clock as opposed to 5:30.
I'm perfectly, that's fine with me.
All right, without objection. Seeing no objection, the order will stand at five o'clock, otherwise as stated. Further discussion? Any further discussion, any further discussion, any further discussion, saying not all those in favor, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion clearly passes. The next matter on the agenda- Did I hear a motion?
Yes, sir.
Motion has been made by Alderman Carver to approve of performing asphalt repairs on Mel Street, with a cost not to exceed fifteen thousand dollars, to be paid from Lincoln Green roadway remainder as presented. Alderman, Alderman Carver, is that your motion?
Yes, sir.
Do we hear a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Alderman Walker. Alderman Carver, do you wish to speak on the merits?
No, sir.
Any discussion, any discussion, any discussion, saying not all those in favor, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion clearly passes. The next matter on the agenda-
Move approval.
Motion has been made by Alderman Little to approve of hiring Tanisha Harris temporary part-time for the receptionist desk until experience works locates a replacement worker as presented. Alderman Little, is that your motion?
Yes, sir.
Do we hear a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Alderman Maynard. Alderman Little, do you wish to speak on the merits?
No, sir.
Any discussion, any discussion, any discussion, saying not all those in favor, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion clearly passes. Next matter before you is an update by Chief R. Frank Nichols on the renovation of the Starkville Police Department.
Greetings, Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the board. Today, I'm gonna give you a brief overview of the progress made with the renovation of the Starkville Police Department.
That's the new building right there, Chief, that tent?
What's that?
That's the current building, that tent that goes up there?
Pretty much. Pretty much. What's that thing on the right-hand side? What's that? Okay. All right, I provided all of you handouts, the same thing that I'm looking at, it's gonna be the same thing that we got here on the projector. Okay, of course, you know, we started this, the contract phase, August the 23rd of this year. We're about a month into it, so it's meaning that we're 10% done with this project. Everything's going well, as well as expected. I did hear the, one of the contractors say at the meeting that we had on Monday, he said that he's done a lot of renovations in a lot of old buildings, and he was very afraid of this building, but he said, once he got inside of it, this building is more solid than any building that he's ever renovated. So, that made me feel good. I've also heard him talk about a lot of the wood and stuff that's in that building, he said it's hard and good, so they're probably gonna be using a lot of this wood. Okay, what's been going on since October, August 2030, interior demolition. They've pretty much gutted everything in there right now. The second floor is pretty much gone, and right now, they're working on the, the main floor, and then they're gonna start the skin side of, the inside of the building, they're gonna get it down to the bare bricks, and, you know, no windows, so, go ahead and flip it. Keep going. Okay, they've made a lot more progress since then, keep going. Keep going. Keep going. Yeah, that's what we're looking at right now. You know, it's hard to believe, as congested as that building was, this is what we're looking at now, and we got pretty much four good walls up in there. So, you know, I feel really good about this project. Go ahead, Corporal Lovelady. This, this is the second floor. They used, they had that last little piece left there, so they can access it, but I think they started, if I'm not mistaken, they started taking that down yesterday?
Yes, sir, they're just going around that one staircase on the exterior, so they can still push plywood out that door.
Yeah, I assigned Corporal Lovelady, who's my public information officer, to be in direct contact with the contractor, just in case they need anything, and as a representative for the police department, so he goes down there at least twice a day, and, and walks around the, the project, and makes sure he keeps me informed, so that's been working out very well. Keep going. This is a picture that Corporal Lovelady sent me today, so if you're looking at the stage and you're looking south, this is what you got right here, this is, this is your view right there. So, that's pretty much nothing in this building, so hopefully by the end of this week, there'll be nothing in there.
Geez, that's looking to the back, looking toward First Baptist Church.
That's it? That's it? Yep. But, that's pretty much it. The next phase of it, they're, they're planning to start the site demolition, then again, installation of the storm and sewer system, and complete the interior demolition, and complete the building skin demolition, which is the walls, getting down to the bare bricks. At this time, I entertain any questions that you may have.
Questions or comments from the members of the board? Alderman Webb.
Chief Nichols, I don't have any questions. Thank you so much for putting this together. On Friday, I attended this before 12 o'clock, because that's our submission deadline for you to brief the board, and what I'll do is, I think that it's important that, as my understanding, you all will meet the third Monday, so that is the day before our recess board meeting.
Yeah, we, we, we meet every third Monday, and I'll be doing presentations every third board meeting.
Thank you so much.
On that Tuesday.
Again, thank you so much for this.
Yes, ma'am.
Any further questions or comments from the members of the board?
Mayor, do you have any comments, since you were there at the meetings?
Well, I was, I was there at the meeting on Monday, and, no, I'll echo what you said, it sounded like the contractor is very pleased with the conditions they're finding in the building, yeah, you know, that, that, having been through new building projects previously, yeah, typically, the, the, the part of the project everybody holds their breath on is when, when you gotta come out of the ground, because you don't know what's gonna be underneath the ground, well, we, we don't have as much of that to worry about here. It's what's gonna be in that building as they start peeling back the layers of it, and as you can see, they've peeled back quite a bit of it, and they, they do not seem discouraged by anything that they found yet, so I, I took that as a positive sign, and, you know, they, they indicated they were about thirty to forty-five days away from knowing everything they felt like they would need to know about the building, so we should learn a lot over the next month, month and a half.
Thank you.
The next matter before you is a consideration of a resolution declaring an emergency situation concerning the interceptor sewer line failure. Now, you have a resolution before you, I'm gonna have Terry explain the emergency, and Phyllis, if needed, to explain her communications with MDA on the authority that, that they are willing to give us. In addition to the language in the resolution, in order to make this work on a timeline before September 30th, I also need authority to execute the contract, so that, that's something that needs to be added to the order. Mr. Kemp?
Thank you, Mayor and Board. As we've talked about earlier, the Banyon Road project has been in place, is critical to our needs. There's two phases to that project. Phase one was basically putting the force main in place, that, that part has been completed, with the exception, we're still finalizing some stuff on asphalt, but that place is in operation. The second phase, as we talked earlier about, was that we needed the rehabilitation, or re, you know, reworking the gravity line from Laurel Hill down Banyon Road to South Montgomery. We really were not able to do a thorough investigation until phase one was virtually completed, to divert some of the fluid that was flowing down, down that line. Since that's been in place, we knew of one major problem on that line to begin with, we've identified a second one through preliminary working with our TV cameras, and to the point that we feel like, or I feel like it's critically an emergency working with engineers, that we need to go on and replace that section and get it rehabilitated before even the weather gets worse. It's really a soil issue, deterioration of some of the pipe. We had looked about two different processes, one is a slip liner that goes in, and then we're filling that around grout. Here again, it really provides a great source, is what we wanted to do, but also stabilized and made a good platform for future years to come. We also, as we talked about earlier, our intent was to do the least intrusive process that we could do, at the same time, cost-effective in doing that. This allows us to use that, that main line to do that. Since the emergency came up, we've talked really closely with Phyllis, because as we remember, we did have ARC funding available and cap dollars available, and so our intent now is to try to request this resolution to go forward, and then we have, this is kind of a special process, I'd say that too, of, of how, there's only a few people that can actually do the slip lining, and there's another process very similar to it, same results, that we would be, we'd be dealing with. I think time is really of the essence. I think based on preliminary estimates, right now, we think we're within budget, of being able to get these completed very quickly under, under the budget. One of the issues dealt with, the funding piece, and Phyllis may want to talk about making sure that we didn't jeopardize, and we may think we followed the rules on the fore, as making the project work. Is that okay, Mayor?
It is.
Good evening, Mayor and Board. We have been in close communication with Mississippi Development Authority, since they are the administrative agency for the ARC grant and the cap loan. ARC is federal funds, as I remind you, cap loan is state money appropriated by the Mississippi Legislature. Initially, we had a construction and contingency line item of six hundred and sixty-nine thousand seven hundred dollars. Your phase one contract was four hundred and forty thousand five hundred and twenty dollars, and there is an anticipated change order that may come forward, but we feel as though there's an adequate amount of money in this budget to fulfill the obligations of the needs that need to be met, and we, MDA has looked at it, they've communicated with me, with your engineer on this project, and they feel comfortable in allowing you to proceed forward in an emergency situation, but there are steps, as you know, that have to be followed, and they're outlined in the resolution that's presented for you tonight.
Mayor, may I be recognized? You may. Mayor, I move approval of declaring phase two of Banyon Sewer Project an emergency situation under the authority given under both Section 31-7-13 Mississippi Code of 1972, as amended in 24 CFR-
as amended in two-four CFR Part eighty-five, the common rule, thus utilizing the non-competitive negotiation procurement set forth at two CFR two-zero-zero-point-three-two-zero-F public emergency and authorizing the mayor to execute a contract for the repair of same pending approval of this, by the city attorney. And I've reduced that to writing.
All right, uh, motion has been read, it's been reduced to writing and placed with the city clerk. Without objection, I will not ask for it to be reread. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Alderman Little, Alderman Maynor, do you wish to speak on the merits?
No, sir.
Any discussion, any discussion, any discussion? Saying none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion clearly passes.
Mr. Kemp? Would you mind updating the website again as far as the progress and where we're gonna be heading with this?
I will, I will do that. And if things continue, just as a side point, both of these, we would be hoping to get started early October uh, with the actual repair work, uh, to get the contract negotiated and signed. What I'll update?
Next matter you have before you is a discussion and consideration of PP sixteen dash fifteen preliminary plat for a parcel on the southeast corner of the intersection of Lynn Lane and Lewisville Street. Mr. Havlin, would you like to introduce?
PP sixteen dash fifteen is requested by four J I L P for a preliminary plat approval for a three lot subdivision of a nine-point-five-nine acre parcel on the southeast corner of the intersection of Lynn Lane and Lewisville Street in a C-two zone. The lots that are part of the subdivision are shown on the proposed plat as lot three, which is right here, lot four, and lot five. Lot two is shown on the plat, which is currently the site of the car wash in the corner of Academy in Lewisville. Uh, is not, was part of a previously properly subdivided plat. Lot three, which is Dollar General, was part of a, has previously been sold, but was not properly subdivided. And this plat is sort of cleaning all that issue up. Portions of all three lots are within the boundaries of designated flood zone. Portion of lot four is in the floodway, which is here on the bottom. The existing and proposed easements are shown on the plat. All utilities are available for each proposed lots. Sidewalks will be required along all roadway frontages that do not have existing sidewalks. It was determined during the planning and zoning commission meeting uh, that no adversely affected parties uh, are part of the previously platted subdivision of, of all lot two. There were three recommended conditions, without reading through all of them. The, the first two basically deal with the surety conditions for the, for the utilities and for uh, sidewalks. And then the last one is dealing with storm water. Available, any questions?
City Attorney, if you're ready.
Mr. Havlin, I heard you say that the planning and zoning commission did not make a find of the fact that there were any adversely affected property owners that would compel notice. Is that also your recommendation that there are?
Correct. The, the, the parcel that's in, the only person that could be adversely affected would be lot two. And at the time, when they purchased and built, it was all zone C-two. So, there's no expectation that it should be something different than what it's being developed as.
Questions or comments from the members of the board?
So moved.
Motion has been made by Alderman Walker to approve of PP sixteen dash fifteen preliminary plat approval for a three lot subdivision of a nine-point-five-nine acre parcel on the southeast corner of the intersection of Lynn Lane and Lewisville Street in a C-two zone with the parent parcel number oh-two-one-dash-zero-zero-dash-one-one-three-point-zero-zero as presented. Alderman Walker, is that your motion?
Yes.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Alderman Carver. Alderman Walker, do you wish to speak on the merits?
No, just to say, uh, we're glad that this project is moving forward and we look for uh, good things to happen at the corner of Lewisville and Lynn Lane.
Further discussion, any further discussion, any further discussion, any further discussion? Saying none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion clearly passes. The next matter on the agenda is a consideration of a special event request by needle, uh, Anita Lindsay-Bush for the fifth annual Starfield Community Day. Discussion?
Discussion?
Move, prove.
Motion has been made by Alderman Vaughn to approve of a special event request by Anita Lindsay-Bush for the fifth annual Starfield Community Day on August first, twenty sixteen, from ten AM to ten PM, with cleanup to take place from ten PM to twelve AM. Alderman Vaughn, is that your motion?
Yes, sir.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Alderman Wen. Alderman Vaughn, do you wish to speak on the merits?
No, sir.
Any discussion, any discussion? Mr. Havlin, do you wish to be recognized?
I'd like to clarify one thing. The cleanup uh, should be for the applicants vendors to clean up, not necessarily sanitation's to clean up between ten to twelve.
Okay.
Uh, that, that was what the wording was intended to be.
Right, I think she won't be recognized.
Ms. Lindsay?
Good evening, Mayor and Board. Alderman, uh, I just have one thing I wanna ask you all. Um, Starfield Day has been a great success for five years, five years. And we just wanna know, can we just add this to your agenda as an annual event each year, the first, first weekend in October?
Well, you need to go through a special event process every year cause that's how the staff determines the amount of in-kind services that the city's providing. And the board has to approve those in-kind services. And uh, those in-kind services will change, yeah, from year to year. Uh, so, so that's a process that, that you'll definitely need to continue to go through.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor? Alderman Walker?
Ms. Bush, I agree with, with the mayor that I think this is a process that we have to continually do. But we certainly know that there are events that happen annually in our community. And I think it is, I think this, the special event permit uh, process is something that uh, is worthy of us taking a look at over the coming months to figure out, how do we find a way to streamline that process, especially for events that are going to occur annually, um, to make it a little bit easier on the folks in community development along with, as, as well as the applicants that are, are moving forward. So, while I, I agree with the mayor that we're gonna have to uh, keep seeing you every year to come back and do this. But I think we uh, might be able to find a way to make the process run just a little bit smoother.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Wen?
Ms. Bush, thank you so much for your Starfield Day. What I would advise, you talked about the first weekend of October every year. I always consider ballgame season. So, you might wanna look at that before you commit to doing that the first weekend because that, I think, be a little bit much for our city. Okay, thank you so much, I would thank you.
Thank you.
Any further discussion, any further discussion, any further discussion? Saying none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion clearly passes. The next matter on the agenda?
So moved.
Motion has been made by Alderman Walker to approve of the city Starfield claims docket for all departments, including the Starfield Utilities Department, as of September fourteenth, twenty sixteen, for fiscal year ending September thirtieth, twenty sixteen, as presented. Alderman Walker, is that your motion?
Yes.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Alderman Wen. Alderman Walker, do you wish to speak on the merits?
No.
Any discussion, any discussion, any discussion? Saying none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay.
Nay.
By a five in favor with two against, and I have Perkins and Vaughn against, the motion passes. The next matter on the agenda is a request for approval of the August financial statement.
So moved.
Motion has been made by Alderman Maynor to approve of the August financial statement as presented. Alderman Maynor, is that your motion?
Yes, sir.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Alderman Wen. Alderman Maynor, do you wish to speak on the merits?
No, sir.
Any discussion, any discussion, any discussion? Saying none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion clearly passes. Next matter on the agenda is a request for approval of FY twenty sixteen budget adjustments.
So moved.
Motion has been made by Alderman Maynor to approve of FY sixteen budget adjustments as presented. Alderman Maynor, is that your motion?
Yes, sir.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Alderman Wen. Alderman Maynor, do you wish to speak on the merits?
No, sir.
Any discussion, any discussion, any discussion? Saying none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion clearly passes. The next matter on the agenda is a consideration of approval of travel.
So moved.
Motion has been made, Alderman Maynor, to approve of travel for city clerk CFO Lisa Harden to the twenty sixteen Master Municipal Clerk in Committee Conference to be held in Raymond, Mississippi, September twenty-sixth through twenty-eighth, twenty sixteen, with advanced travel not to exceed four hundred and twenty-five dollars as presented. Alderman Maynor, is that your motion?
Yes, sir.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Alderman Wen. Alderman Maynor, do you wish to speak on the merits?
No, sir.
Any discussion, any discussion, any discussion? Saying none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion clearly passes. The next matter on the agenda is a request for approval of a purchase of Tyler Technologies Disaster Recovery Solution.
Approve.
Motion has been made by Alderman Vaughn to approve of the purchase of Tyler Technologies Disaster Recovery Solution for an annual price of eleven thousand six hundred and ninety dollars as presented. Alderman Vaughn, is that your motion?
Yes, sir.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Alderman Little. Alderman Vaughn, do you wish to speak on the merits?
No, sir.
City Attorney has asked to be recognized.
Mr. Clemmons, can you just briefly describe to the board why this wasn't bid out?
Sure, uh, we spoke earlier today and I, uh, explained to Chris that this is a proprietary uh, specific to our system that we use. We use Tyler Technologies software and hardware for our financials court and PD. And this is a backup solution, a true off, off-site solution that we've been wanting for a while now. That they offer, it's just a add-on to our current uh, agreement with Tyler. Uh, and it's a good price too, but we didn't, I, I felt it was sole source since it was a proprietary solution. And nobody could offer that specific solution.
Any further discussion, any further discussion, any further discussion?
You may.
Is this coming out of this year's budget or this year's? It is, it is. I, I felt we could go ahead and, and tack it on to the end of this year. Uh, and I'm, I'm paying out of my budget, even though it's covering data from several different departments. But uh, it'll be a recurring fee. And I think, um, I think my budget can, um, can support that. And not only that, it's, it's our mission critical data, so I, I felt we, we shouldn't wait in order.
Thank you. Any further discussion, any further discussion, any further discussion? Saying none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion clearly passes. Next matter on the agenda?
Mr. Clemmons, I just wanted to, Mr. Mayor, may I be recognized?
You may.
So, Mr. Clemmons, thank you for uh, finding a way to be able to make this happen. It is absolutely important that the, the data that we have stored is uh, in a safe, off-site uh, condition. So, I appreciate you finding a way to, to, to work and with your budget to, to make this happen.
Absolutely, thank you. The next matter before you is a request for approval of the promotions of Todd Palmer to the rank of lieutenant and Charles Taylor.
Move, approve.
Motion has been made by Alderman Little to approve of the promotion of Todd Palmer to the rank of, oh, yeah, I'll go back to it. Uh, to the rank of lieutenant and Charles Taylor to the rank of sergeant in the fire department as presented. Alderman Little, is that your motion?
It is.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Alderman Wen. Alderman Little, do you wish to speak on the merits?
No, sir.
Any discussion, any discussion, any discussion? Saying none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion clearly passes. I skipped to the previous matter, that is, consideration of the approval to reimburse Matthew Wright.
Reapproval.
Motion has been made by Alderman Little to approve of the reimbursement of Matthew Wright for students' room reservations traveling to the MRPA conference on September twentieth, twenty sixteen, and to accept sponsor donations to reimburse the same as presented. Alderman Little, is that your motion?
It is.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Alderman Walker. Alderman Little, do you wish to speak on the merits?
No, sir.
Alderman Vaughn?
What happened on this? Please, what are you gonna reimburse and what happened?
Is my retiring, wasn't it?
Uh, there are six, I, I understand there are a few students. Uh, a bill was turned in for reimbursing from the park.
Oh, you took that one?
And from Matthew Wright, they had already made reservations for some college students to attend along with, um, William Bookshop. And rather than listed on the claim stock that we asked that he represented, because, for those students to be allowed to go.
So, it must be, have we selected the donation yet?
Uh, no, so the park has the donation.
The park has the donations, but it hasn't been submitted to the clerk's office yet.
Uh, they brought it in as a miscellaneous revenue and, and just to get some clarity, cause we weren't sure what the donation was for, or if the board had approved the students to attend the conference.
Are these interns?
Yes, sir.
So, these are park interns?
No, they're Mississippi State interns that have gone to the conference and the donation came from Matthew Wright. And we were supposed to reimburse him. He paid upfront and we were going to reimburse him back.
So, there, there's not a donation? No, it, it, he, he paid and he's going to receive a reimbursement?
Yes, sir.
Okay. He's floated the hotel room and uh, this would be to reimburse him the cost of the hotel room. So, effectively, this would be the board paying uh, the, the cost of the student's hotel room at the conference.
These students, did they work at the park?
No, sir. The Mississippi State students. Doing their internship.
Confusion there. I'm a little confused myself.
They're interning for the parks?
Interning for the parks?
They intern at the park, yes, sir.
So, they interned at the park?
So, so they, we do have a relationship with?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Oh, they did intern at the park?
Yes, sir.
They're interns at the park, is that correct?
That is.
Oh.
So, it's, it's a reimbursement to send our park uh, interns to the conference. But it's a reimbursement to a private party rather uh, than a reimbursement to students. It's a reimbursement to a third party rather than to the students themselves.
City Attorney, is that, we're okay there?
I think the board, yeah, it fits the board's discretion to do that. There's no legal prohibition to pay somebody back like that. It's the board's call whether they wanna do it or not.
Deanna, may I be recognized?
You may.
I guess if we do this next year, let, have the, the city pay the interns travel directly instead of going through. It'll just be cleaner, I think, if it goes through that way.
The, the best way to do this is when uh, everybody comes forward for their travel advances. Uh, list the interns that are gonna go uh, for the advances, what?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, but you didn't know any advance if you're going to the conference.
And we can always do a reimbursement too.
We go to the, Miss Ma'am, I just wanted?
But I, it's not an ideal situation. We don't wanna get the situation again where we're reimbursing a third party.
Yes, sir.
If we do reimburse travel, we wanna reimburse the person that traveled.
Yes, sir.
We need to, if they're traveling on behalf of the city, then we, we also need to approve their travel in advance in the future. Cause there's been a motion in a second.
Thank you, Deanna.
Any further discussion, any further discussion, any further discussion? Saying none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion clearly passes. The next matter on the agenda is a request for approval of the promotions of Sarah Burke Carpenter. Motion has been made by Alderman Maynor to approve of the promotions of Sarah Burke Carpenter and Crystal Hackett to the rank of sergeant in the police department as presented. Alderman Maynor, is that your motion?
Yes, sir.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Alderman Wen. Alderman Maynor, do you wish to speak on the merits?
No.
Any discussion, any discussion, any discussion? Saying none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Yes, motion passes. Chief has to be recognized.
I just wanted to make a comment. That's the first time we've had uh, two females be promoted at the same time in the history of Starfield Police Department. So, we're very excited about that.
Thank you, Chief. The next matter on the agenda is a consideration of approval of travel for Emma Gandy to attend the twenty sixteen Mississippi Recycling Coalition Conference.
So moved.
Motion has been made by Alderman Maynor to approve of travel for Emma Gandy to attend the twenty sixteen Mississippi Recycling Coalition Conference in Biloxi, Mississippi, on November first and second, twenty sixteen, with advanced travel not to exceed seven hundred and sixty-two dollars as presented. Alderman Maynor, is that your motion?
Yes, sir.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Alderman Wen. Alderman Maynor, do you wish to speak on the merits?
No, sir.
Any discussion, any discussion, any discussion? Saying none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion clearly passes. The next matter on the agenda is a consideration of a purchase of thirty containers dumpsters.
So moved.
Motion has been made by Alderman Walker to approve of the purchase of thirty containers dumpsters from the sources supply better waste equip in the amount of twenty-three thousand, ten dollars as presented. Alderman Walker, is that your motion?
I know we've got old containers all over town that need to be replaced. And so my understanding that these are to replace some existing containers and also to anticipate the new containers for all the new development that's occurring in town to be at those new locations, is that correct? Thank you.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Any further discussion, saying none, all those in favor? Please signify by saying aye. All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion clearly passes. Next matter on the agenda is a consideration of change order number two for 4D construction for the Bluefield-Greta area sewer project. This is a... Motion's been made by Alderman Vaughn to approve of change order number two and 4D construction for the Bluefield and Greta Lane areas Southwest Starkville Sewer Expansion Project, adjusting contract quantities to match actual quantities used to adjust contract times to match actual times, as presented. Alderman Vaughn, is that your motion?
Yes, sir.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion's been seconded by Alderman Win. Alderman Vaughn, do you wish to speak on the merits?
No, sir.
Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion, saying none, all those in favor? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion clearly passes. Next matter on the agenda is a request for authorization for Starkville utilities. Motion's been made by Alderman Vaughn to authorize Starkville utilities to advertise for bids for substation vacuum circuit breakers for the Northeast Starkville Substation, as presented. Alderman Vaughn, is that your motion?
Yes, sir.
And do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion's been seconded by Alderman Win. Alderman Vaughn, do you wish to speak on the merits?
No, sir.
Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion, saying none, all those in favor? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion clearly passes. Next matter on the agenda is a request for approval. Motion's been made by Alderman Vaughn to approve of authorizing Ren Body Works of Oklahoma, Mississippi to perform a five-year inspection and maintenance on service bucket truck number 19 at a cost of $22,892.46, as presented. Alderman Vaughn, is that your motion?
Yes, sir.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion's been seconded by Alderman Little. Alderman Vaughn, do you wish to speak on the merits?
No, sir.
Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion, saying none, all those in favor? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion clearly passes. And that will conclude your open session business. You do have a couple of matters for executive session. However, let me offer a correction to the public. One of those matters is property acquisition, which I believe has been listed as pending litigation. Unless anybody's aware of pending litigation, then I am not. So you should have printed on your agenda a property acquisition matter and a personnel matter.
Move it to a closed session.
Motion's been made by Alderman Little to go into closed session to determine whether executive session is needed. No second required. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion clearly passes. I'll ask the public to vacate the premises so the board can begin closed session deliberations. And without objection, I would move us into a brief session.